Thank you again for attending tonight's Rock County Civics Academy program. Our ability to provide these presentations is solely dependent upon the financial support we receive from our sponsors and you, our faithful listeners. Our presenting sponsor is Havana Coffee on Milton Avenue. This program would not be possible without the ongoing support of the Italian House and Big Radio, WCLO, WJBL. Supporters include Ragnar LTD and Ragnar Software, the John Westfall family, Dan Pousik's Janesville News Report, American Awards and Promotions, Stockman Property Development LLC, Tim Lindahl, Now the Law. If you believe in our mission, we welcome your financial support. Materials explaining our mission and financial support opportunities are available at the registration desk or by visiting our website, our website, commonsenserockcounty.org. And now let's turn it over to Rich.
Thank you, Paul, and good evening. Gentlemen, good evening and welcome. We had a chance before we went on camera to go through the rules of engagement, as it were, and everybody's agreed to follow those rules. We're not going to do opening comments by each of the candidates individually. We'll simply move into the question and answer phase at the end of the evening. We'll have closing comments for each candidate individually. So with that, I'm going to start with you, Mr. Burdick. What event or events caused you to decide to run for election to the Janesville City Council?
Well, thanks, Rich, for putting this on. I decided to run for reelection. The last two years has been very, was very exciting for me. We had a lot of projects that I was involved in. The Woodman's project was probably one of the most advertised ones out there. But we also did a search for a city manager, which I'm pretty proud of. I think, I thought we selected, I thought the process was very good. We talked with all staff. We collaborated and unanimously, you know, we thought he was the best candidate. And that's one of the biggest things that I think that we were able to accomplish because he will bring, he will bring us to that next step, the city to, for the next step of evolution. And being part of those projects and learning, learning with people and some of the ones, the new projects on the horizon, such as the Centennial Park and the Children's Museum is why I'm running again. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Josh Erdman, what events or events caused you to decide to run for election to the Janesville City Council?
After serving the public for the last 20 or so years as a firefighter, paramedic, and then participating in various volunteer groups, in the last five years, I've become particularly interested in more civic engagement, serving on the Sustained Janesville Committee for the last four years. And as part of that process, I saw what I thought was some places where the communication and engagement of citizens could really be better. And in watching that, I, I came to the conclusion that this is another place that I can choose to serve the community by bringing the exact same decision-making process that I've had as a paramedic for the last 20 years of looking at problems and looking for solutions to those problems. And I can bring that as a council member as well. And that's what, and part of the biggest thing that I'm interested in bringing is better communication overall and civic engagement as part of the process.
Thank you. Matt Gonzalez, what event or events caused you to decide to run for election to the Janesville City Council?
Yeah, sure thing, Rich. For me, it was a little closer?
Yeah.
Is that better? Okay, perfect. For me, it was a matter of looking at the way that the city council is structured, the level of influence they have, all the different moving parts that go on within city government, and wanting to inject a little bit of innovation. I'm a tech guy by trade, and my job involves knowing how a lot of different systems function, how they interconnect, and how they impact one another. A lot of the times, changing one thing leads to a cascade effect on tons of others. So I think that despite not having maybe as much experience as some of the other people that are here with me tonight, I do have sort of an affinity for this, and I'd like to serve the city.
Thank you, Matt. Bill McCoy, what event or events caused you to decide to run for election to the Janesville City Council?
Well, the first one was the dam. The second one was the Woodman's complex. The third is also with the General Motors project. People started calling me, as well as when the property tax re, right, what was it, redone, they turned around, they raised people's property taxes that hadn't been done, anything done to them, they said, can we bring the DOR back? And I said, I'll look into it. We tried to have the Woodman's thing put for the citizens to vote on. We have a runaway council, and that's exactly what everybody was calling me on the phone. We have a runaway city council and a runaway new city manager. We need to get it stopped. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Larry Squire, what event or events caused you to decide to run for election to the Janesville City Council?
Sure, there were multiple factors that really came into play that put this decision to run for city council. The first is, I love Janesville. We've been here now for over 30 years. My wife and I raised our family. We've been involved in multiple areas of the community. I retired from Johnson Bank in August, so needed a little bit more to do maybe, but I just love this community. And there are so many positive things going on right now, and I've been able to be a part of many of those. I agree with Aaron. I think the city manager process was great to get him on board and get things rocking and rolling there. And this city has tremendous potential. And we're just starting to recognize some of that as we've, you know, really fought through all the things that happened following the recession. The resiliency is obvious. So how do we just create a better process and create a city that everybody can be proud of? And I'm excited to try and be part of that solution.
Thank you, Larry. Paul Williams, same question. What events have caused you to decide to run for reelection to the Janesville City Council?
Well, for reelection, there are a lot of things that I have started working on and that are going to take some more time to see how they come to fruition. One of them, of course, being the Woodman's Sports and Convention Center. We are now in the process of getting that built. I want to make sure that that stays on budget. And then how that Sports and Convention Center is going to be run, whether it's going to be city-run or whether it's going to be outsourced to a, to a company to run that. I want to make sure that that is run in a correct way so it doesn't cost the taxpayers any more money than what it's costing now to do the ice arena. And of course, the GM redevelopment that we just started on, we'll have to follow that through. And then one of my other jobs is I'm chair of the Alcohol License Advisory Committee. We have some new rules coming down from the state, so I want to help implement those.
If you could bring that microphone up a little closer, we want to make sure we catch you, the audience, if it's listening from afar. Now bring the mic up close.
I'm done.
Yep. And that goes for everyone. Bring that mic up close. We're operating with interesting equipment today, and we want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to hear what you have to say.
So if the one that is here, if you three could use that, Larry and Paul, if you could use that one, then it's, it's a very directional microphone?
Okay.
So, thank you.
This next round of questions, we'll start with Josh Erdman. Mr. Erdman, the council operates by the rule of four, and that is that you must have a majority of the council agree to take most actions. How do you go about building consensus among members to build support for your position?
One of the reasons that I'm running in particular is to make sure that there's as much civic engagement as possible. One of the things that I would like to do is make sure that we engage more citizens and do more listening sessions with the citizens of the city to have a better idea of what the wants and needs are. I plan to do that as myself, as part of the process of being council member, and then bring those things forward to all the rest of the council members to make sure that we have a better idea. I think that sometimes the, the information doesn't get passed on along properly, and that, I think, is an important thing in order to make sure that everyone's on the same page for what those wants and needs are. The entire process of being on the council is a, is a team aspect, and so there needs to be proper and decent discussion on every topic that we have, and as much polite discussion as possible so that ideas are and decisions are made efficiently.
Thank you. Thank you. Matt Gonzalez, the council operates by the rule of four, that is, you must have a majority of the council agree to take most actions. How do you go about building consensus among members to build support for your position?
Sure thing, Rich. I, I'm a big fan of talking to people and having, kind of like what Josh was just talking about, just having civil conversations with people. I have a pretty diverse background, grew up in a very, very diverse environment, and have a pretty eclectic family, I'd like to say. So we get a lot of different viewpoints. I have a pretty diverse group that I draw upon in all sorts of conversations. So it's one of my favorite things to speak with people as it is. Hearing from the city, hearing from literally everyone, one of my favorite things to do is just take notes. I like hearing from people. I like knowing what people are thinking, and I like keeping track of what other people are thinking. I think that being able to take in those diverse opinions serves well for being able to argue with and for those same opinions. So I think that the big thing is being able to see other people's point of view and being able to champion others as well as yourself.
Thank you. Bill McCoy, the council operates by a rule of four, that is, you must have a majority of the council agree to take most actions. How do you go about building consensus among the members to build support for your position?
Well, I would hope by talking to them and explaining to them that they would listen. I would not jump into something that I thought was bad for the city. I would make sure it was a need for the city, not a want for the city. Just like with the Jackson Street Bridge, it was a need to repair. It was crumbling. I end up, I was not elected in office. I ended up doing it myself by bringing the DOT in to do the complete investigation. I had to do that by myself because of City Hall, and the council would not listen at that time. So that's the problem we had. What we need now is the South Side Grocery Store. We've been talking with them, trying to get them to do something. We've yet to see one do it. I've been in contact with Hy-Vee as well. Somebody's going to have to do something to change.
Thank you, Bill. Larry Squire, the council operates by the rule of four, that is, you must have a majority of the council agree to take most actions. How do you go about building consensus among the members to support your position?
Sure, with that rule, it's obvious that your individual statement is only as good as you can gather and work with the others around you. So it starts with the relationships, and that's what a lot of this is, especially when you have, you know, seven council members, 65,000-plus citizens and, and professional staff. So it's all about relationships. And then that gets into listening, making sure you're taking the time to really understand the viewpoints that are out there of everyone involved. You know, with the seven council members, I think it's a matter, again, of relationships. How do you get to know each other? What's critical? Where are the skill sets? You know, everybody brings a different set of talents, a different set of background. How do you make sure that you're taking those skill sets of your partners and really leveraging them to the extent possible to really come to the best solution based on the information you have and the people involved in the discussion?
Thank you, Larry. Paul Williams, the council operates by the rule of four, that is, you must have a majority of the council agree to take most actions. How do you go about building consensus among the members to build support for your position?
Well, I think an important part of the job is to doing a lot of research, and I'm, with my job, when I worked with my wife at her law office and had to do research on different legal aspects for the law offices, helped me prepare that for being on the city council. I do, I spend a lot of hours doing research on new items that are coming up and seeing how they've worked in other cities and what their problems were in other cities. And I think then you need to have a good discussion with the rest of the council members and bring that research that you've found forward. You're not always going to convince them. You know, sometimes our council is seven-zero, sometimes it's four-three, sometimes it's five-two. But, you know, at the end of the day, we all believe that we're all trying to do the best that we can for the city of Janesville, and we're all friends. I've served with two members here. We didn't always agree, but you stay friends.
Thank you. Aaron Burdick, same question. The council operates by the rule of four. That means that you must have a majority of the council agree to take most actions. How do you go about building consensus among the members to build support for your position?
Well, for, most of the things that are for vote and we vote, there is a consensus amongst the council. There are some topics that come up for discussion that, you know, that the council is split. But you start out by, one, educating yourself, have an idea of what the topic is. If you have questions, you ask those questions. The city manager and the department heads that, that are in charge of whatever topic it is that is going to be coming through the council, they make themselves available all the time. I mean, all you got to do is take the effort and meet with them, okay? And I've got the utmost respect for them. They're, it seems like they work 24/7. But with that information, you got to be able to communicate. You have to be able to listen to what other people are saying. You take all that information and you make the decision based on your convictions. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. This next question will start with Matt Gonzalez. Matt, people have strong opinions on building and operating the Woodman's Sports and Convention Center. What is your role in mending fences and getting the entire community involved in the success of the center?
Sure thing, Rich. So, I mean, with the city council, we would be more in a policy-making decision, or policy and decision-making. We wouldn't really be the day-to-day operations. So I think is important for the council to be able to do, once I'm, if I'm involved in it, would be making sure that we open things up to the public and listen to them, see what, you know, if we're doing things incorrectly, listening to them and figuring out how we can change that, and doing our best to actually listen to them in those regards. But apart from that, I'm not sure that we could, you know, there are going to be some situations where I think the council is sort of restricted, and there are going to be moments when we can take action on what the city wants. And I hope to lean more into what the cities, the citizens would like.
Thank you, Matt. Bill McCoy, people have strong opinions on building and operating the Woodman's Sports and Convention Center. What's your role in mending fences and getting the entire community involved in the success of the center?
I will try to explain as best as I could to a lot of the citizens that called me on this. And I used to work in a law organization like that, as a kid, going through high school and everything, selling popcorn, peanuts, at the Robert Stadium in Los Angeles. Everything was leased out for these situations. And personally, the people that have contacted me have asked me to try to have this thing stopped. They don't want it because the council is not going to listen to them. When they come up in front of them, they haven't listened to them, and they told them to do not build it, they did not listen to them. So that's going to be the problem, is trying to convince the citizens to give the council what they want, but it's a want, not a need.
Thank you, Bill. Larry Squire, same question. People have strong opinions on the building and operating of the Woodman's Sports and Convention Center. What's your role in mending fences and getting the entire community involved in the success of the center?
I think it's all about communication in this. And, you know, when they were at a couple inflection points of the process along the way, and it started with, you know, Chief Moore, when he was interim city manager, the reporting to the city council really started to get the quality of information out there in a much better spot. And I think as the construction process goes, and a little bit to what Paul said, how do we, you know, evaluate what the operational options are for that, and then how do we see which are the best? And just know we're going to have to be flexible. This is a brand-new project. It's a huge project, and so we're going to have to have constant evaluation going on to make sure it's being operated in the best way possible to meet the needs of all the users and the city.
Thank you, Larry. Paul Williams, people have had strong opinions on building and operating the Woodman's Sports and Convention Center. What is your role in mending fences and getting the entire community involved in the success of the center?
Well, once the majority of four voted for this to go through, we, as other council members, we have to abide by what the majority of the council has passed. So I'm, my job is to make the Woodman's Sports and Convention Center the best it can be. People talk about wants and needs. Yes, we could just be a city that delivers nothing but needs, but we wouldn't be much of a city. And I tell you what, we need amenities. We have parks, we have walkways, trails, swimming pool, golf courses. Those are not needs, they're wants, but they really are amenities that help this city grow, and the Woodman's Sports Complex will be one of those, too.
Thank you, Paul. Aaron Burdick, people have had strong opinions on building and operating the Woodman's Sports and Convention Center. What's your role in mending fences and getting the entire community involved in the success of the center?
Well, one is, the largest thing is communication. Make sure that as this process goes on, as construction starts, and that regular information is getting out there through the city. We're updated every council meeting on the Woodman's project. And along with that, as we're trying to decide how to operate the Woodman Center, we need to be transparent on what we're looking at, why we're looking at it, what the cost could be, you know, the pros, the cons, the liabilities that we may take on, all these things. If the public sees that we're taking all these things into consideration, right, and that we're doing our due diligence and we're communicating that on a regular basis, I think they'll, they'll have faith that we're making the best decision possible by the city council for what's best for Janesville and the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Josh Erdman, people have had strong opinions on building and operating the Woodman's Sports and Convention Center. What's your role in mending fences and getting the entire community involved in the success of the center?
Since we're unsure of what the actual operating costs are going to be at the Woodman Center, I think it's important that we do a really good job of analyzing what is going to come about in terms of having an actual process that, that lets the project come to fruition and actually bring in the economic development that we were looking for as a result of investing in such a project. We're going to need to listen to the citizens and make sure that they have, have provided us with the information of where in terms of if those operating costs are going to infringe in any way on any of our needs, what their biggest priorities are. And we need to make sure that we communicate at all times and be very transparent in the entire process that occurs as we go through.
Thank you. The next question will start with Bill McCoy. Bill, what will be the topic of the first resolution you introduce to the entire council? And why is this important? And how do you build consensus to adopt that position you propose?
Well, number one, it's going to be, let's get a grocery store on the south side of Janesville. We're needing one badly. I have already, as I said, been in contact with Hy-Vee. When we lost our pickup safe, they did come, and, but they put the store on the east side, which I called, no, I said, we have, wrong place, we wanted on the south side. They said the traffic was over there. Well, we got traffic over here, so they said they would look into putting a smaller one in. I said, fine. The second issue, I'd be helping, trying to figure out CDC to help them off to get this General Motors thing done, because I'm getting tired of my taxes going up, I'm getting tired of being ripped off and run by City Hall of over assessment. We need to bring the DOR back in. With the General Motors site, that is a priority that needs to be done and immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry Squire, what will be the topic of your first resolution you introduce to the entire council? Why is this important? And how do you build consensus to adopt that position?
I don't know that I have a specific topic, but I would expect it to be around housing, that right now, that's such a key topic within the community, within the country, and that is find housing that our citizens can afford based on their social and economic factors that go along. And those are always changing and always different for everybody. So how do we create housing that is affordable for all those different components that we have our citizens in? And it's back to that idea of communication. Do the research, figure out what options are available, how can we flex to what's needed within this community? Janesville's different than any other community, so how do we match up what we can do from a housing affordability standpoint with the wages that are out there and with the other economic conditions of cost of construction, demand, many other factors? But how do we get all the groups together? You know, we've had housing summits before. Usually, they're a great start of communication, and then trying to work together to find a solution.
Thank you. Paul Williams, what will be the topic of the first resolution you introduce to the entire council? Why is it important? And how do you build consensus to adopt that position?
Well, I'm not sure that, again, it's, that it's a resolution that'll be coming forward, but we're, the Plan Commission is starting to work on updating our zoning ordinances, so that's going to be a big deal because we're going to bring that forward, where we're going to have mixed use and look at that, see where we can do that, even in satellite neighborhoods out in the outskirts of Janesville, where they could have some residential, maybe on the top floor, and maybe small grocery store on the first floor, and, and other amenities on that first floor. At that rate at the moment is not something that's allowed, so we're going to be looking at that. And another thing, maybe bringing an ordinance or a resolution forward. We've had a major update in the alcohol licensing that just came out, so we're looking at it at our next ALAC meeting, which I'm the chair of, and we'll probably have to update some of our ordinances to conform with the new updates on the city or state law.
Thank you, Paul. Aaron Burdick, what will be the topic of your first resolution you introduce to the new council? Why is it important? And how do you build consensus to adopt that position?
Right. I think I agree with Larry and, and Paul at the end there. I don't have anything specific. However, the housing and, and zoning ordinance and the revamping of that, those are, those are probably outside of the GM site. I'm guessing those are going to be, have the largest impact on, on the city. With housing right now, just some numbers, the, the average house is 250,000. Construction costs have been up 400% over the last five years. So it's not cheap to build. We may have to look at tax incremental financing for multi-unit housing. When I was talking with the city administration, I believe it was last week or the week before, and one of the topics was housing, and what can the city do to help facilitate developers to come in and create housing in the city of Janesville? And these are some of the things we've discussed. I plan on continuing to discuss them. This is a major issue, not only for our current citizens, but employers looking to be able to establish that enough employees to run their businesses here. Thank you.
Thank you. Josh Erdman, what will be the topic of the first resolution you introduce to the entire council? Why is this important? And how will you build consensus to adopt your position?
Like the others, I don't know that I have a specific resolution in mind necessarily. One of my biggest focuses, however, is on making sure that we work towards getting economic growth across all of the city. And the thing that I would like to encourage the administration to work towards the most is improving efficiency and making sure that there are no barriers to that economic development occurring. For instance, we have, like any city bureaucratic system that's set up with a lot of different agencies and areas that business, small business owners or larger businesses have to navigate in order to get implementation of their, of their development. And to be able to streamline that into something so that places, people can come in and immediately get through the process is a way that we can improve. Part of that might be looking at other cities and seeing examples of pre-approved housing zoning and setups so that that same process can be speeded through. zoning and setups so that that same process can be speeded through so that we can deal with the housing issues that occur as well.
Thank you. Matt Gonzalez, what will be the topic of the first resolution you introduce to the entire council? Why is this important? And how do you build consensus to adopt your position?
Sure, Rich. I think it's kind of a collective argument here, but I don't have an exact topic that I could say I would introduce directly. I think the big thing for me, kind of like everyone else has sort of stated already, looking at housing, looking at how we're gonna develop housing that's affordable. I know we have quite a few people who have recently lost their homes here in Janesville due to some difficulties with certain property manager. With that in mind, having some sort of a plan in place that would allow us to actually support our citizens when they're displaced in that way, I think is vital. It's very scary to be in a position where you think three months from now, you don't know where you'll be, to think that three weeks from now, you don't know where you'll be. And being able to sympathize with that, to understand that we have as many citizens as we do that are dealing with that right now, I think to make sure that that's something that we address for the future.
Thank you. This next question will start with Larry Swire. Larry, the city just proposed using condemnation proceedings to acquire the former General Motors site. Is this an appropriate use of legally taking property from the private sector for unspecified redevelopment purposes?
Yeah, I think it's the appropriate first step, and that's exactly what this, this is a first step. And unfortunately, once in a while, you do have to follow some legal processes, but it is a legal process. And it is one, if you watch the Monday night council meeting that was well thought out by city staff, presented very well, great conversation among the city council, and it is just that, it's part, it's the first step. But it's available to the city, it's available to the municipality to address a problem that is identified, that has been in place for an extended period of time, and that it needs to have some action take place in order for progress to move. There are always options during this process, as I understand it, to change and adjust and adapt based on the information that is discovered and the conversation with all the parties involved. So it is a flexible process, and it just needs to, we need to allow the process to play out and see where it all goes.
Thank you. Paul Williams, the city just proposed using condemnation proceedings to acquire the former General Motors site. Is this an appropriate use of legally taking property from the private sector for unspecified redevelopment purposes?
The answer is yes. As far as I was concerned, and I voted for the process, there are enough protections in the law that not only, it protects the landowner. So it's not something that the city of Janesville is gonna come in and just say, we want to do something different with a piece of property that we're gonna take over. In this situation, we have a landowner of a major property that is, from what I understand, not communicating with the city. There are fees due, there are taxes due, all kinds of things done that need to be done. And this property now has been sitting this way for way too long. And this is the only tool that the city has to go through this process. It will be a long involved process depending on the different individuals and whose properties are, are affected by this. But this is the way that should be done, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Aaron Burdick, the city just proposed using condemnation proceedings to acquire the former General Motors site. Is this an appropriate use of legally taking property from the private sector for unspecified redevelopment purposes?
In this situation, yes. I mean, obviously, we don't want to be in the business of the government taking people's property just because they think they want to redevelop it, right? That's not what we're doing here. This is a blighted property. It's 250 acres within our city limits. We know, it's a brownfield site. You know, we have an owner that, from my understanding, we don't believe at this point is gonna make any changes to its current state the way it is. So I think the city has no other option to, for its best interest to start this process. Again, it, it's a process, it gives us the, the legal right to start this. You know, there will be compensation dictated, and that's from my understanding, I'm not an attorney, but this is the way it was presented. My, my biggest concern is that we get into this and, you know, we don't quite know what it's gonna cost the city at this point. But the one good thing about this is that it is a process and we haven't committed to any people's money at this point. Thanks.
Josh Erdman, same question. The city just proposed using condemnation proceedings to acquire the former General Motors site. Is this an appropriate use of legally taking property from the private sector for unspecified redevelopment purposes?
The two properties that are brownfield have obviously, at this point, demonstrated that market, market, the market's not going to handle allowing private industry to clean up those areas. So this is the proper use for that since it's, it's likely that the city is the only entity that's going to be able to seek other sorts of funding in order to clean up the polluted situation. At the same time, I am concerned about whether or not the overall process is gonna work. Obviously, we have some time to do analysis. We need, we don't have any idea what those operating costs are. We really need to have a good strategic plan in place in terms of what those costs are gonna be, what timelines are going to be, and to make sure that we're proceeding for those grants. I think the bigger thing, question to ask is whether or not some of the surrounding properties that are not necessarily polluted properties that are also being included in the relocation is an appropriate use, and I don't think that's a precedent that we want to set.
Thank you. Matt Gonzalez, the city just proposed using condemnation proceedings to acquire the former General Motors site. Is this an appropriate use of legally taking property from the private sector for unspecified redevelopment purposes?
Sure. I think, I'm not sure if everyone here has watched our most recent city council meeting just on Monday, but I agree with what's been said already in regards to how well that was handled. It does appear that everything done is completely within legal boundaries. I don't think it's inappropriate what's happening there. I would agree with what Josh said, that there are other properties involved. The GM plant seems to be the primary concern. That's the main focus here because that's the actual property that's sort of affecting everything. It's been polluted for quite some time, and obviously, the cleanup process has not even gotten started. As far as whether or not this is an appropriate or a precedent, I know that's been stated a couple of times, whether or not we're setting a precedent by this, this is an extremely radical scenario. We do not have any other properties within city limits that look anything like the remnants of the GM plant. So I don't think that it's the same as, you know, to Josh's point, it's not the same as taking the other properties around that area. I think the GM plant is a specific case.
Thank you. Bill McCoy, the city just proposed using condemnation proceedings to acquire the former GM site. Is this an appropriate use of legally taking property from the private sector for unspecified redevelopment purposes?
No. Simple as that is, no. I've been in contact with the CDC. I've also been in contact with the EPA on this property. CDC, the EPA will not give them permission to clean up the worst part of it. A city can get the information, can get it done if they get that prop, that partial of that property. That's the only ones that they will let take care and clean it up would be. Unless CDC wants to come in with their dozers and everything and do it all cleaned up the correct way according to the government. So that's what they have told me on the phone. Now, I don't think the city is really working hard enough with CDC to bring things up to the cold situation and everything else. So I'm hoping things, we can talk and everybody can get together on this stuff. And the other thing I forgot to mention, well, go, the wheel tax.
Thank you. This next question will begin with Paul Williams. Paul, one measure of successful investment downtown is the financial health of the downtown tax increment district, the finance. It currently runs in the red. What would you propose to reinvigorate downtown in view of the impending investment in the uptown Janesville mall?
Good question. The downtown, I believe, is still moving forward, certainly not anywhere close to being done. There are buildings, as you go down Milwaukee Street, that they're redoing the facades on it, and there's more investment going in, and we now have the Monterey Hotel open, and I believe there's going to be some movement on the old Woolworths Building and other buildings Hopefully, and I'm not sure that I understand the question 100%, but I believe that the Woodman Sports and Convention Center, at least according to most of the studies, will help with the downtown. And so if we can make sure that the Woodman Sports and Convention Center is successful, not only will it help that area of Janesville, but it should help the downtown also.
Thank you, Paul. Aaron Burdick, same question. One measure of successful investment downtown is the financial health of the downtown tax increment financing district that currently runs in the red. What would you propose to do to reinvigorate downtown in view of the impending investments in the uptown Janesville mall?
Well, there's still investments going on downtown. There, there's still momentum down there to, to continue to improve and for redevelopment. You know, there, you know, with the Woodman Center, the idea was, is from a global perspective that outside of the uptown area, that it would have a more dynamic impact in the city as a whole, okay? Draw, draw people in. You know, when, when that happens, they tend to go to the downtown area. They will frequent shops, and, you know, there's also possibility of children's museum going down there. That would also be an attraction. So there are some things on the, on the horizon for downtown. I feel pretty good about its future.
Thank you. Josh Erdman, one measure of successful investment downtown is the financial health of the downtown tax increment financing district that's currently running in the red. What would you propose to do to reinvigorate downtown in view of the impending investments in the uptown Janesville mall?
My process for looking at any of these items is always to listen to the citizens first. And I think in this case, it's engaging the downtown businesses in, in discussions of what they think they need the most, especially because they're probably the best, the best, they have the best impression of how we can maybe link the uptown Janesville situation and the downtown situation to make sure that we do have those people who are visiting the Woodman Center come down into the downtown area and, and bring them the, the business that the, that they need so that we can encourage more economic growth in the downtown area. So that's the first thing that I think I would do in, in looking at this particular issue.
Thank you. Matt Gonzalez, one measure of successful investment downtown is the financial health of downtown tax increment financing district that's currently running in the red. What would you propose to do to reinvigorate downtown in view of the impending city investments in the uptown Janesville mall?
I'd have to take a look, Rich, I'll be honest. I, I would need to take a look at what any current plans are. I know that looking over projected action plan over the next few years, we do have that children's museum coming in. There's a couple of different, sorry. There's a lot more attention being placed currently in that further uptown area, mainly with the Woodman Center. One would hope that getting some of the citizens involved at the Woodman Center and having people there from out of town, maybe word of mouth will help transfer, but I don't know. I would need to take a look.
Thank you. Bill McCoy, one measure of successful investment downtown is the financial health of the downtown tax increment financing district that currently runs in the red. What would you propose to do to reinvigorate downtown in view of the impending investments going into the uptown Janesville mall?
No to the uptown Janesville mall. No TID district whatsoever, period, no. Downtown, I said it would go in the red several years ago when they first done it. I told them to give it three to five years if people want to come in, and that would help, try to help them after three to five years, see how they're going. No, we don't need, we're trying to get rid of these TID districts in the city of Janesville. People are hurting and nothing. Look at the wheel tax. We're fed up with the wheel tax. People are just sick and tired of these TID districts.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill. Larry Swire, one measure of successful investment downtown is the financial health of the downtown tax increment financing district that's currently running in the red. What would you propose to do to reinvigorate downtown in view of the impending investments going into the uptown Janesville mall?
Sure. Now, downtown, while you say that, you know, it's still in the red, I think it's going the right direction. The town square and everything that's been done now and there is just fabulous. And you talk about downtown activity, the number of events and, and people that have visited downtown since the town square has been done has just been, you know, exponential of what's going on. Flannel Fest was a huge lift again, and I heard great things about it. So we just have to stay with it. But we also know there's been some changes in the last five years of what's going on with the real estate down there. Great addition of Monterey Hotel converting to the apartments and the addition of the storage units in that same area. But all the office buildings with, you know, remote working and everything else like that, we have to look at what's going on downtown with office and retail, and how do we repurpose that? Talking about zoning, talking about housing, what's the best way to do that? But it's all about the synergy of a community, and it builds. So if we have a great downtown, it's got a lot of things going. We add the Woodman Sports and Convention Center, get a lot of activity going on down there, it's the synergy that'll make it happen.
Thank you. We're going to take a break. Time for everybody to stretch their legs just a little bit. We'll, we'll commence again in about two minutes. Paul?
Okay, very good. And just reminder, the rest moves in that direction. Thank you again for attending tonight's Rock County Civics Academy program. Our ability to provide these presentations is solely dependent upon the financial support we receive from our sponsors and you, our faithful listeners. Our presenting sponsor is Havana Coffee on Milton Avenue. This program would not be possible without the ongoing support of the Italian House and Big Radio, WCLO, WJBL. Supporters include Ragnar LTD and Ragnar Software, the John Westwall family, Dan Pushick's Janesville News Report, American Awards and Promotions, Stockman Property Development LLC, Tim Lindau, Dowland Law. If you believe in our mission, we welcome your financial support. Materials explaining our mission and financial support opportunities are available at the registration desk or by visiting our website, commonsenserockcounty.org. And it looks like we have a couple people yet away from the panelist table, but just a reminder to go out to our webpage and look at the future candidate forums for the Janesville School Board, the Milton School Board, the Milton City Council, and then again for other events that we have planned in the month of March and in the future of April, in which a hot topic in April might be the potential Janesville School District Referendum. So with that, Rich, I'll turn it back to you.
Okay. I think we're ready to move this along again. I want to use this next segment as an opportunity to take some of the questions that came from the audience, and I'll do my best to, to read them as close to verbatim as I can. I apologize in advance if I mess up and mispronounce something or I don't get the rhythm quite right. Two things that I always look forward to when these questions are, brevity and good handwriting. Honestly, most of them pass, so thank you. Let's start with this if we could, and we're gonna begin this round of questionings with you, Aaron. The south side is underdeveloped. Access to shopping centers, groceries, and entertainment is almost nonexistent. Do you have plans to address this?
Well, I think what we need to do, and, and yes...
Well, I think what we need to do, and yes, I have talked with city administration, again, just within the last couple weeks, on what kind of projects could be utilized that the city's already going to do that, that some of these developments can happen, or at least they work in tandem, or one can benefit the other. And, you know, Center Avenue is set to be, I'm sorry, the reconstruction of Center Avenue from the Five Points, basically, down to, I believe it's Nicolay, I could be mistaken on that, but... So you're going to have that, you're going to have a lead replacement along with sewer, sewer and water replacement. When that stuff happens, you know, there's opportunities for businesses... That was quick, sorry. All right, I guess that's it. Thanks.
And just a reminder to folks that so we make sure that we're catching not only the audiences here, but the audience that we have on the live streaming of the event. Speak into the microphone, get it up there close and personal, and look out into the audience, let them know that you're paying attention to them. Josh Erdman, same question. The south side is underdeveloped. Access to shopping centers, groceries, and entertainment is almost nonexistent. Do you have plans to address this?
The south side is one of multiple neglected city commercial corridors in the city, and we need to first start to move forward with the zoning changes that the city is going to do to make sure that there's opportunities for the development to occur. The city needs to move towards making sure that we're enforcing all the laws and not keeping the south side looking like a blighted portion of the city. We need to work on rebranding the south side to something other than just an industrial property like it's been for many, many years. There's lots of potential for commercial and residential to go into the south side, probably one of the best areas potentially for housing. And so we really need to make sure that the south side is put forward and that, starting with infrastructure and other investments, all along that Center Avenue corridor.
Thank you. Matt Gonzalez, the south side is underdeveloped. Access to shopping centers, groceries, and entertainment is almost nonexistent. Do you have plans to address this?
100%. I think that assisting the south side would be beneficial to all of Janesville. And if elected to the city council, my plan is to make sure that we're benefiting all of Janesville. I don't think that we can really see the city succeeding long-term without having all of our city succeed long-term. It's just common sense. I myself live on the south side right now, and I understand the struggle. Having to drive 20 minutes to be able to get to a decent grocery store is pretty difficult. So yeah, I absolutely would want to help develop the south side. I'd like to bring some entertainment down there. I'd like to make sure that we are not just looking at it as something that has a Walgreens and a couple of fast food chains that are mimicked up on the north side.
Thank you. Bill McCoy, the south side is underdeveloped. Access to shopping centers, groceries, and entertainment is almost nonexistent. Do you have plans to address this?
I've been fighting for the south side ever since I've lived over here on the south side. I live two blocks from the General Motors event. We know where the problem is, but our problem is City Hall. They don't want to do the darn thing. We've addressed it to them. It goes through one ear and out the other. That's the reason why I'm running for city council. Another reason is, so the citizens have their say. They're getting fed up with the Ron Blay City Council we got right now. Yes, we need housing. We need grocery stores. We need other stores on the south sides. They're driving eight to 10 miles to 15 to the other people further down that end up going to Woodman's down in Bloick or Piggy Wiggly down in Bloick. So enough is enough. We're not being serviced correctly by City Hall of Janesville. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry Squire, the south side is underdeveloped. Access to shopping centers, groceries, and entertainment is almost nonexistent. Do you have plans to address this?
Well, I think, first off, my son lives over on the south side, so I'm there on a very, very regular basis during the week. And yeah, it does need some help. And I think as, you know, as mentioned before, the reconstruction of Center Avenue is a big deal. I think as you watch any reconstruction, as we watched Milwaukee Street get reconstructed downtown, just the feel that happens with that reconstruction is a tremendous thing. So that's door number one, kind of get it rocking and rolling. We've talked about the GM site. If you talk about undeveloped 250 acres adjacent to the south side, right there is a huge hole in the south side. So to try and move the south side forward without solving the GM problem is a significant hardship. And so that has to go in concert with whatever you want to do on the south side. You have to solve the GM problem to give enough rooftops, to give enough people, to give enough activity. You know, the county building going up was a great plus to see a very, very positive property redevelopment there. So there's good things coming. We just got to stay with it.
Thank you. Paul Williams, same question. The south side is underdeveloped. Access to shopping centers, groceries, and entertainment is almost nonexistent. Do you have plans to address this?
Well, again, what's been said, especially with the redoing of Center Avenue, is going to help tremendously. It's going to be a long process, but what we decide, what the city council decides to do with the Jetco property and the GM property will be a huge plus for the south side. I live on the north side. I could walk to the three grocery stores. Sometimes be careful what you wish for, because when I go to back out of my driveway when there's a Packer game going on, it takes a long time. I understand, you know, a south side grocery store would be great. The only way that they could do it in Madison, on the one area that they needed, Madison is supplementing that grocery stores so they can make a profit. I don't believe that Janesville is at that point yet. I don't believe that the citizens of Janesville would agree with that for us to supplement a business in order to make it. It really needs to be the number of rooftops and supply and demand to get a grocery store there, but we'll work on it.
Thank you. This next question, we'll start with you, Josh. In light of the recent housing crisis with the city having to supply victims of eviction with $500,000 or more, how will you protect citizens from this happening again?
I think the most important thing is for the city to be the facilitator to other public partnerships that we have federally and at state level, county level, that deal with the housing crisis situation. I don't think it's entirely the city's job to throw money just in that circumstance, but to make sure that all the resources that are available to these types of, to these individuals who are being displaced are available, and the city's job there is as a facilitation. We really need to make sure that we move forward with getting more affordable housing in the city. That's, economic growth and housing come hand in hand. If we're not producing situations to make sure that that economic growth can occur, especially mixed-use growth, which is really the modern situation that we need, the only way to do that is for us to get the zoning revamped, to remove some of the red tape, to make sure that that economic growth can occur and that we can get more housing presence so that it becomes more affordable because there's more supply there.
Thank you, Josh. Matt Gonzalez, in light of the recent housing crisis with the city having to supply victims of eviction with a half a million dollars or more, how will you protect citizens from having this happen again?
Yeah, just going back, I know I mentioned this a bit earlier, but the idea that, you know, we've provided that $500,000. We have provided some help in that regard. But a couple of months from now, should that money run out, what's the game plan at that point? I think that having resources in place going forward, rather than just trying to throw money at an issue like this, is going to be the better long-term solution. We would hope we don't see this kind of thing happen again. We would hope that we can develop housing that's affordable for everyone in the city. But with that in mind, this is a scenario that we didn't foresee. This is something that, you know, looking back a year ago, no one would have thought that this would be an issue that Janesville was facing this year. I think that making sure that there are city resources available to help people that fall into these scenarios, because not everyone is in this scenario of their own fault. It's not something that's happening because someone did something wrong other than one person, I guess.
Thank you, Matt. Bill McCoy, in light of the recent housing crisis with the city having to supply victims of eviction with a half a million dollars or more, how will you protect citizens from this happening again?
Well, they've already been fined, and they've been in court. The state and federal government has got themselves involved. Well, that $500,000, let's just give everybody a second here. Let's say that table right there needs a whole new water system in it, and the city's got $500,000. Let's take a contractor that's pretty reasonable. Let's get that fixed so the people can still live in the house instead of putting them in a motel. Now, we can take that money off of his property taxes, add it to his, excuse me, we can add it to his property taxes at the end of the year. We can get the money back through the property tax evasion. We can do that on a lot of those homes. Why haven't the city decided to do something like that and help the people to stay in house instead of wasting money at a motel?
Thank you. Thank you, Bill. Larry Squire, in light of the recent housing crisis with the city having to supply victims of the eviction with a half a million dollars or more, how will you protect citizens from this happening again?
Yeah, I think there's two sides of that crisis that took place. One is the owner of the properties, and I think there needs to be some look back in to say, were there some warning signs that should have been reviewed or revealed leading up to this so you didn't have a crisis take place for the tenants that were so negatively impacted? So that's where you have to go, lessons learned at this point in time with that specific property owner, because the tenants were not driving the problem. They obviously had to have the consequences land on them. And then for the city to respond, because those are the citizens of Janesville that are having negative impact at no fault of their own, how do you create the best scenario for them in that? And having the resources, having the relationships with the other nonprofits in town that can help them, you know, find those places, that's where those relationships can come in. So you have to take a look at both sides. How do you help the people in the crisis, but how do you prevent the occurrence going forward?
Thank you, Larry. Paul Williams, in light of the recent housing crisis with the city having to invest, supply victims of the eviction with a half a million dollars or more, how will you protect the citizens from this happening again?
Well, hopefully it never happens again, and I'm not sure how we can protect them from happening again. The law does not allow us to tell certain individuals that you can only own so many houses. It's a free country, and they can buy as many houses as they want, that they can afford. However, I am hopeful that we will learn a whole bunch from this process. I was grateful that we were able to set up a system where we were able to help them because it was such a short notice. The $500,000, and I'm not sure how much of that was spent, but not only that, but to get all of the different organizations together to inform these tenants on the different resources that were out there was just a tremendous thing. So we'll have to look at what needs to be upgraded. Do we need to have more information available to tenants? Do we need to set up a better hotline or something to that effect? But we'll learn from this.
Thank you. Aaron Burdick, in light of the recent housing crisis with the city having to supply victims of the eviction with a half a million dollars or more, how will you protect citizens from this happening again?
Well, how you protect people in the future is learn from what has happened, you know, where the failures were. And to identify, was there something that the city had the power to do that they didn't do, right? And from so far, I haven't heard anything that stands out that we failed them. It's an individual who failed his tenants and the city, basically. But we do have to give credit to the city manager and staff. They quickly found out of the decree and coordinated resources, both publicly and privately. We authored $500,000 in support of this crisis. Don't know if all of it's going to be needed, but we tried to put a network in place as a safety net for them. So one, we got to look back, identify if we failed them, and learn from that. And two, implement any, anything that we have identified that we can control in the future. Thank you.
This next question, we'll start with you, Matt, if we could.
I think you can.
How would you propose to improve intergovernmental cooperation on issues of homelessness, affordable housing, and similar issues?
I mean, first things first, I would have to actually be introduced to those people and actually get in a room with them and talk with them. Speaking with those different branches of our government would be the first step. Actually finding common ground between them and trying to figure out what the end results that they're all shooting for would be my next step. And trying to find a way to get the best results for all of those multiple parts of our government at the same time. That's kind of something that I do on a daily basis. My job involves a lot of different moving parts, a lot of different people that don't always agree, and finding how I can make them all happy at the same time. It's kind of a joy for me. That's sort of what I enjoy doing.
Thank you. Bill McCoy, how would you propose to improve intergovernmental cooperation on issues of homelessness, affordable housing, and similar issues?
Right now, we've got a lot of vets around here that are hurrying. They do not want to go to the police department and let them check them out and everything else. They know good. We do have several around this community. And we do have some property on the west side of town that if the city wanted to, they could probably see about looking at putting some small housing over there in that area if we could get the land to build small little houses for vets and people that are homeless. That would be helpful, and that'd be next to the Pizza Hut area. That way, they got busing and everything else. Everybody promised that something was going to go in there, nothing has yet. So let's see about getting that bought and put some miniature homes in there to help some of these homeless people.
Thank you. Larry Squire, how would you propose to improve intergovernmental cooperation on issues of homelessness, affordable housing, and similar issues?
Sure. With the intergovernment programs, it really gets down to understanding who has what role and responsibility, who has access to what funds, who has what experience. So that's the communication. That's gaining the knowledge of where those different role and responsibilities exist. Because what we don't want to do is have duplication. We need to understand where the efficiencies are, where we go to get the assistance that we're looking for, how do we apply for it in an efficient and effective manner? So it's really understanding, you know, where those different ones are, and then having the communication, asking the questions, looking around to where different programs have been implemented, what have been aspects of the implementation that have worked, that haven't worked. Usually, you don't have to recreate the wheel. It's been done out there before. So let's make sure we understand which of these intergovernment agencies, whether it's local, county, state, federal, who has what role, responsibility, and how we can tap into it best.
Thank you, Larry. Paul Williams, how would you propose to improve intergovernmental cooperation on issues of homelessness, affordable housing, and similar issues?
Well, the social programs, a lot of that funding goes to the county. The city does get some funding for some programs, but most of the funding for social programs do go through the county. However, homelessness certainly has a big effect within the city limits. So we do have to work hand in hand with the county on what funds are available to deal with homelessness. As far as the affordable housing, we're working on that. You know, every time we build a new home or a new apartment building, that helps the people that maybe were in the middle to move up to the higher ones and continue to move up. And hopefully, those other older homes or smaller homes are more available to the people that are coming up. We have been working over the years and continue, and hopefully, we will even expand on that, on working with not only the county, but local governments around the area as far as purchasing power. power.
Thank you. Aaron Burdick, how would you propose to improve intergovernmental cooperation on issues of homelessness, affordable housing, and similar issues?
The first thing is to get all the stakeholders together and communicate, listen, spitball ideas off each other, you know, seek additional funding. You know, I mean, really what it boils down to is having an understanding how each and every one of these roles, what they do, how they work together, how we can coordinate it to be like a force multiplier so that we can actually make some changes. Instead of each individual group doing their little thing, how do we get them all combined into one big effort? And when you can do that, you've got a force multiplier, which then you can tackle larger situations. But basically, it boils down to getting together, knowing what you're talking about, communicating, and then taking those ideas and actually implementing them. Thank you.
Thank you. Josh Erdman, if you had the power, how would you go about correcting the, how would you improve intergovernmental cooperation on issues of homelessness, affordable housing, and similar issues?
As part of my public safety career, I also have an education in emergency management, in which case there's a lot of sort of dealing with exactly this, the herding cats scenario of dealing with different government agencies. Really, in that situation, you always have to have some sort of plan in place of what the direction is in order to get all of those government agencies in place. And that's the role here for the city of Janesville, is to make sure that we've listened to the people who are most impacted by the affordable housing situation, most affected by homelessness, find out what their needs really are, what things they are willing to, what their goals in the end are, and what they're willing to maybe deal with in the intermediate terms, and then make sure that those things are passed on to those intergovernment agencies, and figure out which ones are the most appropriate to deal with the different parts, because there are different roles for each of the different intergovernment agencies involved. But in any case, the city of Janesville needs to be the one that listens to the citizens first and engages them as part of the process.
Thank you. That concludes this round of our questioning. We're going to take a break. When we come back, we'll open up the balance of the evening proposing comments from each of the candidates. Each one has two minutes to summarize their comments for the evening. So stay tuned. Paul, it's yours for the next one.
Okay. We'll have our final commercial for the evening. Thank you again for attending tonight's Rock County Civic Academy program. Our ability to provide these presentations is solely dependent upon the financial support we receive from our sponsors and you, our faithful listeners. Our presenting sponsor is How About a Coffee on Milton Avenue. This program would not be possible without the ongoing support of The Italian House and Big Radio, WCLWJVL. Supporters include Ragnar L T D and Ragnar Software, the John Westfall family, Dan Pushick's Janesville News Report, American Awards and Promotions, Stockman Property Development LLC, Tim Lindau's Now in Law. If you believe in our mission, we welcome your financial support. Materials explaining our mission and financial support opportunities are available at the registration desk or by visiting our website, commonsenserockcounty.org. And before we start up, we need to do our wrap-up for one of our sponsors, The Italian House. And we'll spread the tickets right here. Close your eyes, Chris Jason, is this your hat one?
Non-participating person?
There you go, yeah. Why do you, you came in the back door?
Probably.
Okay. Six, one, zero, seven, two, eight, zero.
I'll split it.
There you go, all right. Super.
They're waiting on one. Okay. With that, we're going to turn things over to the candidates, and we'll continue in the order that's actually taken to round number 10. So that's going to make Billy McCoy the first to have the opportunity to do closing comments for two minutes. Bill, Tony, it's yours.
Well, the reason why I'm running is a lot of citizens have called me and said, Bill, would you please take the ring and go ahead and get this done as much as you can? Because you know City Hall is not listening to us as citizens of Janesville. They have been ignoring us on the south side, the far west side. They have been ignoring the people, period. It's gone through deaf ears, a runaway city council because of the Woodman thing, and people are fed up with it. The taxes, they're fed up being reassessed when they haven't done anything to their property and it's jacked up so high. And the wheel tax, they want their wheel tax stopped immediately. And there's a lot of other things that's going around the city for housing. We need to get the housing brought to everybody's attention. On the south side, we have land that used to be for sale. I don't know what happened to the signs off of Lloyd Avenue. But we also have an Indian burial ground across back there. So we're going to have to get Mr. Raindeer to come in and find out about this little bit of burial ground that would be east of Lloyd Avenue. They tried to put a pin in there, we stopped that. So we need to get that looked at. That would be an area for housing and apartment houses back in that field that was for sale. Like I said, I don't know what happened to them. They went down, the course of signs down. We don't need no more warehouses. We don't need any tid districts. We're fed up with them. If they think we're from 10, 15, 20, 27 years worth of payback, I would probably be dead before they even get paid back. And a lot of other citizens are saying the same thing. What the heck is wrong with City Hall? So we need to get down to brass knacks, and we need to change the way this town is being run and then start listening to the ordinary citizens in the community.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill. Larry Squire, closing remarks.
Yeah, I mentioned that a lot of factors came together to, you know, encourage me to run, and I was a little nervous in December when I made the call. But over the last couple of months, it's kind of gone from nervousness to excitement. And then sitting here tonight, that excitement just gets further because it's a great bunch of individuals up here, great conversation, everything going on. We live in a wonderful community at a really cool time. There's a lot of good stuff going on. Other challenges, of course. You know, we know we're limited, you know, we all have limited resources, we have limited activities, but that just means there's good problems to be solved, and that people that want to be innovative, that want to be flexible, that want to be adaptive, have the possibility of really come up with some great solutions for this community. And, you know, I think our city government, having seven council members that are all at large, that all represent every citizen, along with the city manager, and not having a mayor, is a really unique system of government that's not out in very many communities, especially of this size, that gives us that flexibility and opportunity to have good conversation, to explore where we can go and try and have great solutions. This city is growing. And so how do we find the solutions that are going to continue to have the city grow? And we can all have a different definition of what grow looks like, and is it too fast, too slow, too big, whatever. But it needs to keep moving forward, because sitting still and doing nothing is not a very positive solution. So we need to find those positive solutions in our growth. We've got good city staff right now. They're professional, they're well-trained, they care about what's going on in this community. And so how do we empower them? How do we help them be the great professionals they can be while still holding them accountable as citizens to make sure that they're driving forward with the goals and objectives that we have as citizens and make sure they deliver on them? So I'm excited about where the city is going and very hopeful I get a chance to participate as a council member.
Thank you. Paul Williams?
Well, there's a lot still going to be going on in the city, and I just felt that I really wanted to do another two-years term to see some of this come together. The Woodman Sports Complex, the downtown, and the GM property, which is probably going to take a lot more than two years, but I want to see at least the beginning of it. And then also, there's new rules and regulations in the alcohol, and I've been involved with the alcohol committee for all 16 years that I've been on the council, so I want to see how those are going to be updated. I feel that I have a lot to offer. Again, I got on in 2000, I got off for a while. I kind of joked that when I got off in 2008, the General Motors shut down and the downtown flooded, so eventually I decided to get back on and make sure that that didn't happen again. But it's, I enjoy it, and you may not always agree with me the way that I vote, but I do listen, and I certainly do a lot of research, and I enjoy research, and I try to always vote what I feel is best for the citizens of Janesville and Janesville itself. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Aaron Burdick?
Yeah, you know, I spent the last two years on the city council, been able to learn how the city functions, been able to establish relationships, not only with city staff, but with citizens as well as private organizations. And with those two years, you know, you know, right now, I'm really excited because you start learning the passion that some of the city employees have with some of these projects, along with the private organizations and the private citizens. To be involved in that is something special. If you don't know what I do, I've spent the last 25 years in law enforcement. Currently, the Law Enforcement Services Division Commander. You know, I bring a skill set of leadership. Been there, done that. I operate yearly on a $14 million budget. I'm responsible for managing that. I have 79 employees under my leadership. So this is just another piece of that. And as I spend more time on the council, more effective I'll become. You know, I believe in the city. That's why I started doing this in the first place. When you started seeing the things going on downtown and these other developments, and you start feeling that buzz, you see the excitement, and I mean, if that doesn't get you motivated to stand up and do something for your community, then, you know, I don't know what's wrong with you. So that's kind of what I'm about. I try to be pretty clear and transparent of where I stand on things. I try to take a decisive stance, even though I am willing to pivot based on new information, because you have to be fluid and adaptive of information as it comes in and being able to respond to that. You know, there are projects coming up that I think that I could be asset to the city of Janesville and make those hard decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Josh Erdman?
The questions asked tonight were primarily about the current problems, which we immediately need to deal with. We don't know what future problems the council is going to deal with. I have a clear process by which I plan to deal with any type of problem that comes along. Again, after 20 years of dealing with life-threatening problems and figuring out solutions for them, it always starts first with listening to people. Again, it's the number one thing that I want to make sure happens is that there is complete communication between the city and the citizens, and that those citizens are fully engaged for anything that goes on. I plan to try to be a shining example of that for the city administration. I plan to have my own personal listening sessions, both as a candidate and then also as a council member. On my Palm Card, and you can see the information there, the same phone number, the same email address that is present there, will be available as a council member as well, and I will be able for you to be contacted at any time to listen to problems and then move that information on to make sure that people are always being listened to. Analysis is the next part of the process. Sometimes what I'm told by somebody in terms of symptoms that they have, sometimes that's not necessarily the exact part of the problem. So being able to do that kind of critical reason, or that kind of critical thought process is very important as a council member, and I will make sure that the information that is brought to the council from the administration is always as thorough as possible. I want to see more of what we saw the other night on the council meeting, where items that are consent items get moved to an actual discussion points, that the city has that type of transparency, and questions need to be asked of the administration to make sure that all the information is really there. And then finally, we need to, last is to come up with a plan of action to move forward, and that will always be my three-part process as a council member after the election. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Gonzalez?
Sure. Hi, everybody. I've already kind of answered a few of the questions here tonight. I agree with Josh, a lot of it seems to be touching on things that are more relevant to the current issues we're facing as a city. But I think an important thing to draw on is a lot of those issues are things that we wouldn't have foreseen a few years back. The current housing issues that we're looking at, while it may have been something that was a glaring red flag for anyone that's looking at all the code violations that were going on, it's not something that anyone anticipated would have been hundreds of people displaced. So I think that while it's important to be able to speak to experience within the city, it's also important to be able to pivot and innovate and take on new issues, and being able to rapidly research and figure out those issues. That's what I do for a living. That's what I do on a daily basis. It's what makes me happy, and I'd like to bring that to the city. I'd like to be able to provide that to our citizens, because it's what I know I'm good at. While I don't have direct experience with specific issues and specific committees, like some of the people on the board here have, I think that where I shine is being able to endure, being able to take on new information, and being able to apply that across the board. And I'd like to have the chance to do that for you.
Thank you, gentlemen. In summary, we didn't get to all the questions that frankly that needed to be asked, and so I'll remind you that there's a big week coming up, the second week in March. On March 11th, we'll have the Janesville City Council candidates again in a forum that will be at noon at Rotary Gardens. It's sponsored by the Janesville Noon Rotary Club. On March the 12th, we're hosting in conjunction with the Milton Chamber of Commerce, an evening with the candidates for Milton City Council and for the Milton School District. That event will be held at the administration, Milton School's administration building in their large meeting room, and that starts again at 6:30. That evening, we'll have two forums that night, and we invite you to be there. On March 13th, the Janesville School Board candidates will be with us for a forum at The Italian House. All four of the candidates there will be in attendance. They're running for three seats for the Janesville School Board. And then again, on the 14th of March, we will have the Janesville City Council candidates one more time at 7:00 a.m. at Rotary Gardens, and that is sponsored by the Janesville Morning Rotary Club. And then finally, on March 18th, the Janesville School Board candidates will be meeting one more time in a forum with us, and that is on the 18th. It will be at Rotary Gardens, and that's sponsored by the Janesville Noon Rotary Club. I know the League of Women Voters also has some forums scheduled, so there's a lot of opportunities for folks to get to meet your candidates, talk to your candidates, get the information you need to make an informed judgment, because April 2nd is an important day. Thank you all for attending tonight. Appreciate your support, and I appreciate the fact that you're willing to get involved, get informed, and make a difference in your community. Thank you again. Good night. (applause)[1756.33]